I would like to call to order the January 7th Milford City Council meeting. Now will you please stand for the pledge in a moment of silence? And during the moment of silence, keep all the victims and families from New Orleans in your prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Mayor. Mayor Evans?
Here.
Vice Mayor Parrish?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Here.
All right, that takes us to a presentation. It's always an exciting night when Chief Mills gets to give a presentation. I will turn it over to him.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. It's an honor to be part of this ceremony to commemorate the promotions of Terry Chastain and Tara Dennis. Sergeants Chastain and Dennis actually began their new assignments on December 23rd. However, this is the first opportunity we've had to appear in front of council. Before we continue with the ceremonial oath, I'd like to talk briefly about the history and origins of a sergeant. The word sergeant comes from the French word surgeon, meaning servant, valet, or court official, which in turn derives from the Latin word servians, which also means servant or soldier. The English first borrowed the word from the French in the late 13th century to refer to both military servants who accompanied knights and those in charge of enforcing tribunal judgments. In those days, sergeants who accompanied knights were generally mounted soldiers who lacked the means to purchase the equipment and hire the retainers necessary to be recognized as knights in their own right. A knight's sergeant held a variety of duties, ranging from tending to and fighting alongside the knight during combat, to pressing and leading groups of peasants into battle. In this context, the term sergeant became associated with a leader who trained and disciplined soldiers. In modern policing, a sergeant assumes command of daily operations in the absence of the senior command. A sergeant also serves as a first-line supervisor of police officers and department employees in the fulfillment of their daily duties. The police sergeant's responsibilities, in addition to the duties of a police officer, include the performance of administrative staff duties, briefing and training staff with regard to new developments, directives, and techniques, conducting performance evaluations, and enforcing agency policies and regulations. Promoting an officer to sergeant is one of the most critical decisions a police administrator makes. To be successful, a police sergeant should be able to perform a broad range of supervisory responsibilities and establish a relationship of trust with the members of the department as well as the community. An outstanding police sergeant should be able to lead by example and confidently assume command when necessary. There are many skills required of a sergeant, but more than anything, it's their character that will ultimately determine their success or failure. A sergeant must possess a strict adherence to our policies, procedures, and most importantly, our code of ethics. And it's based upon those considerations that Mr. Gunderson and I made the decision to promote Terry Chastain and Tara Dennis to the rank of sergeant. Officer Chastain has been a member of the Milford Police Department since 2015. Prior to that, he served as a U.S. Marine and with the Mount Healthy Police Department. He holds an Associate's of Applied Business degree in Criminal Justice from Miami Jacobs Career College. During his nine years with the Milford Police Department, he has served as an instructor, officer wellness team member, field training officer, Citizens Police Academy commander, armor, evidence technician, and acting supervisor. Officer Chastain has earned the department's fitness medal, chief's commendation medal, and the Silver Bullet Award. Officer Dennis has served with the Milford Police Department for eight years. During her career, she served as an instructor, field training officer, evidence technician, acting supervisor, and as a member of the Hamilton County Underwater Search and Recovery Team. Officer Dennis holds a Bachelor of Science degree in Criminal Justice from Mount St. Joseph University, where she also played on the women's basketball team. Officer Dennis has earned the department's fitness medal, chief's commendation medal, and the Silver Bullet Award. She now has the distinction of being Milford's first female police sergeant. A round of applause. In addition to the, our oath of office, which I have previously administered, every newly promoted police sergeant is required to reaffirm the IACP oath of honor. If you would both please raise your right hand and repeat after me. On my honor, I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust. I will treat all individuals with dignity and respect and ensure that my actions are dedicated to ensuring the safety of my community and the preservation of human life. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will always uphold the Constitution, my community, and the agency I serve. Congratulations. Very good. Now it's time for the ceremonial badge penning. Sergeant Dennis has chosen to have her mother Tamara pen her badge, and Sergeant Chastain has chosen to have his son Micah pen his badge. If you would come forward, please. And finally, it's my pleasure to issue your certificates of promotion. I have full faith and confidence in both of you and look forward to working closely with you. And that concludes the ceremonial presentation.
All right, well, thank you, and thank you both for your dedication to Milford. We appreciate your service.
Congratulations.
You are free to leave. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. And the energy buzz disappears.
Yes.
All right, that takes us to proceedings. Do I have a motion to approve the proceedings from the December 17th meeting?
So moved.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
And financial statements. So I have a motion to adopt the November 2024 finance report.
So moved.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
And that brings us to public comments. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to, we don't have any standing committee reports, so they'll take us to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. I think everyone can hear me. Before I get into my city manager report, I just wanted to congratulate, now that both of the new sergeants are gone, I want to congratulate them on their promotions. I had the honor to sit through those interviews and, over the last, how many years, I was able to sit through quite a few police department interviews, whether it's an officer or even a police chief. And I was honestly very impressed with both of them. They both possessed a large amount of loyalty, pride, and knowledge for their position. So I told chief, I'm very excited to welcome them in terms of their new promotions and continue working with them. With that being said, moving into the city manager report. I believe this was sent out, so thank you, Jackie, for sending this out. The first item is the 100-day plan. That should have been an attachment to the email. I did provide council with a copy last Friday. I just wanted to highlight that there's five key areas, one being that of a five-year plan. I think I brought this up in my final round interview, but to me, this is extremely important. This will be a good opportunity to sit down with department heads and staff and really identify what are our goals internally, and then be able to work with council to identify and ensure that everything lines up. Ultimately, what this will allow us to do is it'll allow us to compound this, roll this into a comprehensive plan. So I'm very excited with that. That gives us a plan, gives us a working document as we start to strategize, not only a budgetary standpoint, but also what are our goals and equipment upgrades and stuff of that nature. Moving into state of the city. Contractually, I think I have to do this by February. I forget what the date is, but I want to kind of improve this. I like to do state of the cities, not only at council, but I like it to be an event in which you can invite businesses, residents. I want it to be like a big event. So what this allows us to do is it allows us to talk about the prior year successes and, you know, discuss all the great things that we accomplished as a city, but also moving into the following year. What is it that we, what are the priorities? What are potentially projects that we can announce? It really builds momentum. It gets buy-in from the community and businesses. So I think this is something that we as a city need to celebrate, not only at the council meeting, but I would like to make a bigger event out of this, so we'll stay tuned for that. Marketing, that's something that I continue to prioritize. And actually, Shannon Rolle, she had a meeting today with the new mobile app company, and we've started to make progress on that. And then the rest of them, operational efficiency, that's something that, of course, I prioritize. And then lastly, the business retention expansion program. We need to be out there meeting with our businesses, whether they're small or large, and this sort of program will allow us to ensure that we're meeting with our businesses. My goal is, I would like to meet with one new business every week. If I can get more, then that's good. That's great. But that's the goal. So those are the goals for the 100-day plan. If council would like me to add anything or would like me to refine anything, I'm certainly open to any recommendations. But I think that's a good solid start, and of course, it doesn't stop there, but that's a start, so. There's any revisions that are needed?
Sounds good.
Yeah, it's great.
All right. Moving into the water tower project. Council consider two ordinances tonight to not only fund the remaining $1.6 million in water tower funding, but also to award the contract for the water tower. I know we have Mr. Brandstetter back there. He's been hugely helpful, as well as, of course, our finance director, Pat, and lots of other staff members. So we're looking forward to getting this, hopefully getting this ball rolling, and we know this is a key part to our future. We internally have been working with Representative Schmidt's office to secure the, excuse me, the $400,000 grant for Five Points Landing. We actually received the guidance for this yesterday, so this will be sent to committee, I think, Monday. We're looking at scheduling a meeting, and then we'll look to accept that at the next meeting. So that's huge. And really, what the remaining part is, how do we want to leverage those funds? I know there's been a few ideas thrown out there, whether it's the irrigation or other different, other ideas. So just getting council's input on that. Vision Development has their final PUD plans to be voted on the January 14 Planning Commission. Staff attended the ribbon-cutting for Zones Gym on Friday, January 3rd. And I have to say, that's very impressive, whether you like a cold plunge, saunas, pickleball, dumbbells. There's like everything there, and it's very nice. So that was, that was very neat to attend. And lastly, I think this goes without being said, but certainly deserves a lot of attention. I wanted to thank our, our street department and our wastewater department and everyone else that helped get the snow removed from the streets and the sidewalks. They did a phenomenal job. In fact, I was on my way into work today and I saw someone biking after like nine inches of snow. And I'm like, that's really a testament to the, to the skills and the job that the street department did to remove, remove all the, the snow. So that's the conclusion of my report. Just a couple of reminders. January 8th at 2:00 p.m. is the Tree Commission meeting. Also, January 8th at 6:00 p.m. is the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. On January 13th at 4:00 p.m., the Milford Community Sustainability Commission meeting. January 14th at 6:00 p.m. will be the Planning Commission. On January 20th, the offices will be closed for Martin Luther King Day. And our next council meeting will be January 21st at 7:00 p.m. If there's any other questions, that is the conclusion of my report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That takes us to Chief Mills in the police report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just submitted my December monthly report. Just some highlights. Officers took 1,069 call records consisting of 410 extra patrols, 134 offense reports, 27 crash reports, 119 traffic citations, and 126 traffic warnings. There were not a lot of notable occurrences, but we did unfortunately have another auto theft. Fortunately, in that case, we recovered the vehicle and have charged a suspect in that case already. As you're aware, we stayed really busy in December with a lot of community relations. You know, our usual ones, Shop With A Hero and the Operation Holiday Patrol, the annual DECA Club Basket Drive. New this year, I had the pleasure of attending the Cavalry United Methodist Church's Christmas play and service. Officers Newmeyer and Williams also stopped by and had some lunch with the members of that congregation after the play and service. And it was a great time, something I would highly recommend people in the community consider doing during Christmas. It was a very festive event. And if you have any questions with my report, I'm happy to take them.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That takes us to Chief Thiel in the fire department report.
Nice haircut, by the way.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, filling in for Chief Baird. So we've been, the staff's been working on our end-of-the-year stuff with budget, been getting a lot of transitions for contracts and renewals and everything going for this year. Saturday night, we did have a call-out for our generator and light unit over to Springfield Township. They had a critical missing person, so our crews responded with that resource, which is a regional resource. And they were there well into the night. Ultimately, the team efforts did find the person, so that was a success. But we were glad to be able to help them as a regional collaboration. We've been, staff has participated in several webinars directly with the National Weather Service Office in Wilmington over the past couple of days to stay on top of the weather briefings and make sure we were prepared for anything that was coming. Our crews have worked tirelessly to clear the station grounds. We are a 24/7 operation, so we had people up in the middle of the night making sure that our driveways were clear and walkways were clear and everything. We wanted to give a shout-out to the service department. They did phenomenal at the firehouse. Every few hours, they were rolling through. A couple of times, we had to call for them on demand because we were having trouble in the driveway. But Eddie and his crew, that, the whole group, did a fantastic job of keeping the, keeping the firehouse cleared off so that we could maintain business as we needed to. We really didn't have any significant incidents related to the weather, fortunately, so far. No serious auto accidents or serious fires or anything, so we're thankful for that. Unfortunately, when it starts to fall out sometimes, that causes more problems, but so far, so good on that. Just want to remind everybody, and if you have discussions with them, fire hydrants, with the plows going through, we want to advise the public to keep their fire hydrants about three foot of clearance around them. Make it a neighborhood party or whatever. Go out one day and shovel out the fire hydrants. Unfortunately, we do not have the resources to go out and do that, so we rely on the community to take care of that in front of their houses or in their neighborhoods. Also, another caution with heating devices, as it gets snowy and cold, people like to use heating devices, so we want to make sure that we're giving people guidance to make sure their smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, and natural gas detectors are working. If you have any requests for information on how to prepare for the weather, anybody that's worried about it, the FEMA, federal FEMA website, as well as ready.gov have some very good guidance that we can steer people to, from everything from keeping your house warm to emergency plans if the power goes out, or plans to find shelter if they need it. And the last thing I have, Chief had mentioned, and I believe it was on the agenda, that we needed to select two members for the Volunteer Firemen's Dependence Fund. I honestly am not 100% sure what that process is, so I'm going to defer that to Chief to follow up with that. I don't know if, I think you guys just elect two people to represent.
Yeah, we, that's what we did last time. We appointed two people.
Yeah, okay.
So Christopher and Janet, would you like to be on it again?
Yeah, sure.
Right?
Yeah.
Would anybody else have any issues with that?
Sure. Okay, I'm not fully aware of what the procedure for that is.
Do you need an official motion? Do we need a vote?
Please.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it, sure.
Okay, and I'll have Chief Baird follow up with you to make sure we get everything procedurally.
Yeah, Jackie, your whole call.
Yes. Mayor Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
I'll stay and do employment.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Unless you have any questions, that's it.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to council comments. Anyone from council like to make a comment?
I have some to stun, too, Ralph.
Go ahead. I don't even want to try to wait.
I have a couple. One, I ask that we approve Amy Pritz. She is a, going to be a new member on the Parks and Rec Commission. And if we could approve her, and then she will come to the next meeting to be sworn in.
Do I have a motion?
I would like to make that motion for Amy Pritz.
Second?
Brad, second.
Yeah, Brad.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
And we still have another opening, if there's anyone out there that is interested. Also, National Park Service is beginning a feasibility study to see if the Buckeye Trail, which we are part of, should be named a national scenic trail. So there are some local things that are going to go on. There's virtual things from, well, Monday, January 6th through February 19th. Jackie does have information. If anyone is interested, they can email her, jbain, B-A-I-N, at milfordohio.org. I had to look it up, but where did I find that? The feasibility study. Didn't know what that was. But anyway, it provides recommendations to Congress regarding the feasibility and suitability of designating a national trail based on nine criteria outlined in the National Trails System Act of 1968. Anyway, so, been around a while, and that would be something very cool if we were part of that. But if anybody has any information, Jackie has more.
Thank you. That's exciting. Mr. Velardo?
Well, I would be remiss if I did not, I've gotten quite the accolades because we have this new city manager guy who shows up on Facebook now. And it's amazing, and, and I think the public has already responded to that, but that was so well-received. And everywhere I go, people talk about the fact that you engaged the community already. So to go along with your 100-day plan. But also, I believe we had a record snowfall, and in the past, our city manager was from wherever. But now that we bring a city manager who came from northern Ohio, I see that you brought this inclement weather with you along with. We didn't, we weren't sure we were hiring that in. So not that you deserve all the blame for that, but we could, you know. But the other thing I do want to make sure is the, you had talked about the state of the city. Pre-COVID, we used to do a fabulous job of partnering with the chambers with, and it was an event. All the local businesses and dignitaries, all the politicians, the community, and it was a morning event, you know, a few hours. And whether we did it, do it ourselves or do it in conjunction with other, but I certainly think that that would be warranted.
Yeah, you mentioned that, and the chamber used to do it for the township and us, when it rotate kind of back and forth, hosting a township, hosting a city.
So I heard the chamber will actually be here tomorrow to discuss that, so
Okay, good.
I will keep you in the loop on that.
Yeah.
Is that it, Mr. Velardo?
Oh, and then the economic fore, it's coming up in March. The Claremont Chamber hosts every year, March, I think it's 13th this year. You should, if you have not had an opportunity to attend, I highly recommend all council members. It's just very informative, three hours or so to talk about the economic forecast for this southwest Ohio, the country too. But it's certainly something that if any members of council are able to attend that day, I would highly recommend it.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to echo the shout-out to our service department. I had several friends tell me that the roads were great till they left Milford. So that's always a shout-out and always a good tap on, pat on the back. And again, echo the compliments on the video, because I did get lots of people saying how nice that was to hear from you. All right, I would like to bring us into the meeting of the whole, committee of the whole meeting. I don't know, do we have to vote to go into the meeting? Yes. So Jackie, we call the roll to go into the committee of the whole meeting.
Mayor Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
And we have a public comment session for the committee meeting. Does anybody want to make a comment? All right, then I will turn it over to Mr. Gunderson for items on our agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Starting off, the 911 Committee, quite frankly, Jackie probably has more information on this. This is the one I'm least prepared for, but my understanding is, for the 911 Committee, we need a representative as we are the largest municipality within this, well, within the county, which is why we need a representative. It's my understanding, my predecessors served on this committee. So I need a, I need the council to vote me in on this committee.
I'll certainly make that motion.
I'll second that. Like I said, that's the one I'm least prepared for.
Well, they meet every week, you didn't know that.
Three times on Sunday.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
All righty. The next two items for the committee of the whole is, as it relates to the water tower. The first one is the loan agreement with OWDA, the Ohio Water Development Authority, in the amount of $1,642,228. That is the gap in terms of the capital needed to complete the project. I think this is a very creative way to finance this, and this was a job well-done by staff as well as our consultant, Brandstetter. We, I mean, really, this is an impressive project. The city received a $3 million project for a $4 million water tower, and all we had to do was finance 1.6. So this is a way that we can conserve cash and, and spread the cost over a period of time. So I need council to recommend a ordinance to approve the loan.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is an agreement to engage with McGuire Iron to, for the construction contract of the water tower in an amount not to exceed $4,404,000. And once again, this is for the Wallace Avenue Water Tower Storage. We've received two bids, and I'll let Mr. Brandstetter answer any specifics, but we received two bids. They were a million and a half below, I believe, or a million below the next closest bid. So we saved quite a bit of money, and they've got pretty good past experience as well. So I'll let Mr. Brandstetter, if that's okay with council.
Is the tower going to look the same, the same shape? Will he be ready against that?
It'll be a, it's called a pedosphere.
Okay. Kind of like, I think that's what's up there now, I think, similar. Okay.
It'll be, it's not same height, but it's a mirror ball at the top. You're going from a usable of 350,000. You're going, speaking of like a, I think it works.
There he is.
Outside.
How's that?
There you go.
There you go.
I might sing, so you're in trouble.
Oh, nice.
You're going from a usable of about 350,000 gallons to a million, which is what you need to comply with your demands in Ohio EPA's regulations.
And then, obviously, there's a big discrepancy. In your experience, are you comfortable or recommending, I don't know any, I'm not familiar with this company?
Yeah, the McGuires experienced, they have many more days. They requested 770 days because they weren't quite sure when they were going to get to it. The other contractors were at 450 days. That's not unusual because of fabrication of steel. You know, the steel's not purchased to use on a contract. They got fabricated, cut it. There's only a handful of water tower contractors in the country, so none of these are in our time zone. And it's just very unique construction.
Have they done other projects in this, do you know?
I believe they have, council. Be honest with you, we opened them so long ago and checked their references, I don't remember the details other than they got very good reference.
And then what was the timeframe again, did you say?
770 days. Now, it won't take that long. They were, a lot of projects with the money coming out of the feds, you know, people were just bidding and bidding, and some of them, they were smart enough to hedge your bets. You know, go ahead and ask for longer days, lower price, and they got it. They'll give us a firm schedule. They know we're here tonight, we'll get a schedule in the next council meeting or two and share it with Benjamin.
We'll aim for seven days, no promises.
Only because we are going to get asked, I mean, that's the number one. We might have a resident on Wallace Avenue right now who's listening, who is, who's probably already, you know, fired. But again, in all fairness, I mean, it's been a long time, so hopefully that the 700 days can be.
Yes.
It'll be reduced.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions?
Can I introduce Greg Bryan from our office? He's in the back row. Greg's our surveyor. I've, I live on in Panhandle lot, we've had trouble with our driveway the last 48 hours. And Greg had to come bail me out, he lives out near Monroe. I said, Greg, you're going to have to come get me into four-wheel drive. And put a plow on the front if you would, but anyway, Greg's here, and he'll, you'll see him from time to time. Thanks, Greg.
Now, are you saying that he's responsible to cut at least 100 days off the bill, is that what you're saying?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, good, all right. Like him already.
All right, glad to see it move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we need a?
Motion.
Motion to draft the ordinance going into agreement with McGuire Iron for $4,404,000?
Second.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Awesome, all right. Lastly, so this is requesting an amendment to ordinance 24-320. To put it simply, I made a giant mistake, and not really a giant mistake, I made a small mistake in terms of utilizing old numbers as it relates to the water rates. I used the 2019 rates instead of the 2020 rates. I do apologize for that, so we need to make a slight amendment to the ordinance to reflect the proper rates so we can move forward.
Can, just for the sake of the public, can we just verbally tell us what those rates are?
Yes, so actually internally, we had a, we will be preparing a, a little card to send out with the water bill to discuss that. Thank you.
But it'll still be 20%, we just had the numbers wrong.
It'll be 20%, so instead of $5.98, or 96 cents for the within corporate limits, it'll go to six, excuse me. Instead of $5.63 is the old rate, the new rate will be $5.96 for outside city limits. Instead of 8.40, $8.40, it'll be $8.92. As part of my 100-day plan, we are committed to making more videos. This will be something that we make a special video for, so explaining what that means. We'll be sending out communication with the water bills to show that for the average four-person family or household, the average bill will go up X amount of dollars per month. So this is something that we want to communicate and strongly emphasize that, you know, for how many years the rates haven't increased, and although we need to increase them now, we have been working with the Center for Local Government to establish a consultant to conduct that rate study. The plan is, we don't want to do another 20%. You know, if it's, if it's a 3% or a 5%, whatever is needed, we want to reduce that, those big percentage increases, but fully know that costs are rising and, until we can figure out a way to reduce them and everyone else that's also trying to figure that out, we just have to stay competitive and do what we can, but fully know that we are trying to keep the rates as low as possible, but we can only do so much.
I'll make the motion to draft the ordinance to correct, still at a 20%, I just want the public to understand that we are not changing the rates anymore. It's still at 20%, we just have to correct the actual numbers. So to make that motion to correct those two errors and to draft that ordinance.
I'll second that.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yep.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, and we need to go back to the first, the 911 Committee, because we're not only nominating Mr. Gunderson, but we're also nominating Kathy Bailey from Loveland.
Oh, that's right.
So could we maybe redo that motion, I guess? Want to nominate both of them?
Yeah, so I'll just amend my, or.
Just do a second one.
Just do a second, to also add Mayor Kathy Bailey from the city of Loveland to our recommendation.
I'll second that.
For the public safety.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, any other discussion as a committee of the whole? I have a motion to close the committee of the whole meeting.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, that takes us to new business, Mr. Pacheco, and ordinances and resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 25-657, a resolution selecting Benjamin Gunderson and Kathy Bailey to the Claremont County 911 Program Review Committee. Whereas pursuant to Ohio Revise Code, Section 128.06A, the city of Milford must select certain members to the Claremont County 911 Program Review Committee. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Milford, Ohio, with two-thirds of its members thereto concurring as follows. Section 1, pursuant to Division A2 of Section 128.06 of the Ohio Revise Code, Benjamin Gunderson is hereby selected as a member of the Claremont County 911 Program Review Committee as the chief executive of the most populous municipal corporation in Claremont County. Section 2, that pursuant to Division A5 of Section 128.06 of the Ohio Revise Code, Kathy Bailey is hereby selected as a member of the Claremont County 911 Program Review Committee. Section 3, under and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to adopt? Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-327, an ordinance authorizing city manager to enter into a loan agreement with the Ohio Water Development Authority for $1,642,228 to construct the Wallace Avenue Water Storage Tank Project and declaring an emergency. Excuse me. Whereas by ordinance number 24-324, the city of Milford, Ohio, open pre-LGA, closed pre, entered into a cooperative agreement with Ohio Water Development Authority, open pre-OWDA, closed pre, to finance construction of the Wallace Avenue Water Storage Tank Project, the primary storage facility for the Milford Water System, and whereas the LGA desires to obtain a loan from OWA to enter into a loan agreement as set forth in the cooperative agreement, now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Milford, Ohio, Section 1, the council of Milford, Ohio hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into the attached loan agreement with OWDA. The terms and conditions of said agreement are hereby incorporated by reference in their entirety pursuant to and in accordance with Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2, that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety of the city of Milford, Ohio for the reason that the immediate construction of the Wallace Avenue Water Storage Tank at the earliest possible time is necessary in order to protect the health of the inhabitants of the LGA by providing fresh water, wherefore this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and immediately after its passage.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only? Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-327, an ordinance authorizing city manager to enter into a loan agreement with the Ohio Water Development Authority for $1,642,228 to construct the Wallace Avenue Water Storage Tank Project and declaring an emergency.
Motion to adopt? Second.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-328, an ordinance awarding bid for the construction of the Wallace Avenue Water Storage Tank Projection Project, excuse me, or on live TV, project to McGuire Iron in an amount not to exceed $4,404,000 and authorizing the contract execution, now therefore be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. Having solicited and received bids as required under the charter and having received a recommendation from the Water Department, city council hereby awards the bid for the construction of the Wallace Avenue Water Storage Tank Project to McGuire Iron in accordance with the attached bid and contract documents for an amount not to exceed $4,404,000. In council's judgment, McGuire Iron's bid offers the best and most responsive price to the city considering quality, service, price, reputation, and past performances and financial conditions. City council authorizes the city manager to contract with McGuire Iron and perform such work in accordance with the bid and contract documents at a cost not to exceed $4,404,000. The bid and contract documents are attached and fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2, under and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend rules and read by title only? Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-328, an ordinance awarding bid for the construction of the Wallace Avenue Water Storage Tank Project to McGuire Iron in an amount not to exceed $4,404,000 and authorizing contract execution.
Motion to adopt? Second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Sorry about that, thanks. Ordinance number 25-329, ordinance amending, ordinance 24-320 in Section 923.01 of the codified ordinances of the city of Milford, increasing water usage rates. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. Section 923.01 of the codified ordinances of the city of Milford shall be amended as follows.